December 20th, 2016, special meeting of the Guyman City Council. We've moved this up because of the holidays and other things. We're going to start tonight. William, would you give us the invocation?
Dear God, we just come before you at this time. We just thank you so much for your love for us and what you provide for us each and every day. Thank you for your son, dear God. We thank you for this season. I think we stop to reflect more of his birth and the view it seems like the rest of the year. We just thank you again for your gift to us. We just pray, dear God, that you be with us and go through this meeting, be with the ones that have ideas to present and give them a recollection of the ways they're going to present to the cities, and it would be best for us to hear. We thank you for the opportunity we have to serve, dear God, and we just pray that you make the decisions that's right for the city. We thank you for Larry, as he's come up and helped us through this time, and we just pray that he has safe journeys as he travels back and forth through his home. For each of the citizens that'll be traveling over the holiday, dear God, we just pray for a safe journey. We ask all these sayings in your sense of meaning.
Amen. Mr. Swager, would you lead us in a pledge?
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start tonight with the Guyman Housing Authority. So I'll call that meeting to order. Agenda item number two is to approve the minutes of the special meeting of October 27th, 2016.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting of October 27th, 2016.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action on approval of the AHIP rebate to Lance Windell Development in the amount of $192,000. There's staff reports. Are there any questions, discussion?
I've got some questions. First of all, have we received all the sales tax that we're supposed to get from that? All materials, the sales tax on materials was supposed to be delivered here for the sales tax collection.
Did Larry?
I'll respond to that. David, Harris, and I have reviewed the files, and we believe that we've received adequate information to say yes to that. We have an affidavit from their accountant, and we think that the material they've supplied answers that question.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion?
I think we need to probably make...
What, do you want to do that? We hadn't got to public comments. You want to wait and do it then?
Well, I suppose we're going to vote on it before we hear from them.
Larry?
What's that?
He's one of the... Should we do public comments about the people's problems, or that...
I would think this is a separate issue. I would think you'd want to act on this request and then have your public comments after you've made a decision on this. This really isn't related to the issues you may be hearing from the owners.
I make a motion that we approve the rebate to Lance Windell Development.
Have a motion.
Second motion.
Have a second.
Swager.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comments and announcements are deemed by sign-in. Wanted to make a comment on the sign-in sheet. We're going to... On public comments, and I know there's quite a few of you here that want to make comments tonight. Mr. Alvedres, would you be the official timer?
Yes.
We... Public comments, we limit to... Try to limit to three minutes. If you're going to talk on the same subject, you might want to have one spokesman and give him all your time, or you can speak individually if any of you that want to make a public comment. So if there's anybody that'd like to make a public comment, please come up to the podium and identify yourself and...
Good evening. My name's Shawn Livingston. Some of my neighbors are here with me. I live over in the Milestone Homes. As you know, this past weekend, temperatures dropped well into negative degrees. Majority of us lost heat all weekend. Pipes froze up in our housing from our heater, didn't have heat. A lot of us have very young children. Temperatures dropped into the 50s, low 60s in our houses. I spoke with the people who installed the equipment in our house down in Ardmore, and he told me he didn't agree with the way that Milestone had it installed, but he did it because that's the way they wanted it. A lot of the work that's done in those houses is not being done correctly. It's not being followed up with it by us. They don't schedule when things are going to get fixed. People just show up. They ask us to do work ourselves. The patchwork's just being done as a crutch to get by out of their one year, what they owe to us, and after that year, who knows what's going to be left of those houses. I still have two inches in my drain pan up in my attic. Calls aren't being answered inappropriately. Houses, pipes are bursting inside, brand-new homes, and they're just going, "Yeah, we'll get a fix for it. Don't worry about it." I think it's pretty sad that a lot of us are very honest citizens in this community, and we have to suffer because what we thought was going to be what was told it was going to be, isn't what it is. And I think that they're misrepresenting who they are, and we're a very good group of people, and we've been very compliant with what they've asked. I think something has to be done about it, and we think it's very unfair that we're going to approve this rebate to a group of people that isn't representing what they really are. They've cut a lot of corners. They've caused a lot of stress, time, and ill will to our community. So that's all I have to say, and thank you for letting me speak to you guys.
Thank you, Shawn. Anybody else? Okay. On... If... Mike, come on up. On the... If you're with the Milestone deal, the one comment I'll make, make sure that Brock's got your name and your street address and your phone number. Brock Scroggins back in the back. I know that him and Kevin are working on some things with Lance, and they'll be willing to help you out. Mike Fritz, I'm going to introduce you.
Okay. Yes, I'm Mike Fritz. For y'all that don't know me, I've lived in and around Guyman all my life, but I hadn't been sleeping too good, I told my neighbor until I came up and talked to the mayor and the council. I'm not knocking anything. I just want to know that I worked for ConocoPhillips or Phillips Petroleum Company for 38 and a half years. We had a lot of HazWAP, Hazmat training and incidents, but on September... Or November, the 19th, on Saturday, my neighbor's house burnt down. It was the Nunes house, and I was woken about 4:00 in the morning. First responder I saw was the police and telling me I need to evacuate my house. And we live in a kind of a unique deal. I'm on an acre, he's on an acre and a half where Bill Harris used to live. It's off of 24th Street, back south, about a block. They annexed us into the city limits 18 years ago. And when they were laying that new line out to Seaboard, I asked... Fire Department came down and gave a safety meeting for us, and I asked them if they could check in on some fire plugs then. I'm not sure that's the answer, but they stopped there at East Street and went across, I think maybe Sam Fuquay Edition or whatever I call it that. They had some fire plugs put that way, but not on east, on 24th. And the nearest fire plug would be Quentin Smith's old house, old fire chief, I would say on 24th Street anyway, about a half block from the new fire station. I live approximately, probably a half a mile from the fire station. That evening, or that morning, I just woke up at 4:00, and they told me to evacuate the house. By the time I grabbed my britches, they told me the neighbor's house was on fire. Found my britches and found my little dog and got him out in the car. EMS vehicle was there, so they did a good job, but I wasn't going anywhere when I pulled out because they were in my driveway, and looked like that things were kind of under control. It looks like they were laying a line from 24th Street down to the house, which probably 250 yards, good two football fields anyway. And there was a fire truck there. I got out of the truck, or my car, went over to my neighbor's house, and at that time there was a fire in the garage area. Kim, I misspoke to you. I told you the first water I saw on location, and the first water I did see on location was from Hooker, but after I talked to Mr. Nunes, that fire truck did have some water on it. So they did... He did tell me that they did put water on the... Some... In the garage. I don't know what... I noticed there's a lot of fire people here today. I don't know what their trucks hold, maybe 500 to 700 gallon, but, you know, they'd already rolled it up.
You're going to need about a minute, and you need to be done.
I'm sorry.
That's right.
But what I'm getting at, there's another fire plug a little closer. It's on Tabit and 20th Street. It's maybe 75 yards closer, and what I'm wondering, where we live, is transport truck or something. If it wouldn't be easier for the fire department for water, because the next responders at the scene was Hooker, and the next people were Texoma, and they can only hold so much water, 300 gallon or so. And then they were out, and I was afraid that my place was going to catch fire next, and because there's evergreens, it's, you know, 15 to 20 feet tall. They put water on it. By that time, the house is going. We're waiting for a transport truck. I guess your hot zone or cold zone was off 24th Street. What I was wondering, if it wouldn't be an advantage, because I'm thinking of life and property and then the environment, to put one of them in that new fire station in one of those seven stalls or contract it somewhere, because if they had the transport with that 100, 120 barrels of water, you'd only had to lay one line from the transport truck to the fire truck and immediately have water.
Okay.
And maybe using some of our contractors. I know through the oil patch, you know, we've got Nichols, we've got different people that have transport trucks if you don't want to purchase one. They're probably cheap now because the oil patch is in bad business. You probably... That's my question. If we could get a transport truck, keep it heated, and it follows the fire truck, and you only lay in one line, and those guys work their fannies off, I know that.
Okay.
Putting the line in and having to drain it down and all that, and it was 21 degrees that morning. I couldn't get my hose going. But I wanted to bring that out because I feel like we could have saved maybe the foundation on that house if that... We'd have had that.
Okay.
I don't know. I'm not knocking... I'm not knocking the fire truck.
Okay.
I know that.
Okay. Your time is up, Mike.
All right.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the time.
You bet. Okay. Anybody's computer working?
Mr. Mitchell, would you tell them that the state inspector's coming out tomorrow?
Kevin, Kevin should...
I guess.
I'll probably have Kevin come up, and he can tell them then. Yes, sir.
My name is Hassan Elamudi. I live on that Milestone Homes. The council just approved $192,000 without listening to its citizens first. I'm beyond myself if that's what had just happened. Number two, does the council know if there was any inspections done on any of these It just happened that I own 18 businesses, and I'm a mechanical engineer. I can't believe you guys are just sitting there approving $200,000. Your citizens are sitting there. You didn't even listen to them. I'm not mocking you down. I just want you to listen.
Sir?
If this was your home, you have six children, they're freezing all night, you would at least listen and act.
Mayor?
Yes, Larry.
It's just not right.
I'd be happy to respond to that. We've been talking... We've been talking... Our building inspectors at the back of the room have been talking with the developer trying to find solutions to your issues. We have a meeting tomorrow scheduled with the state building inspector. Kevin and Brock would be happy to take your names and your addresses, but you have to understand one thing, and that is that the... You've purchased... Since you purchased the home, your issue is with the builder, not with the city. The city did the inspections.
Okay. I would like to know the name of the person that inspected my house and that record. I speak for myself, not for everybody here, but I would like to know who inspected my house. Like I said, I'm a mechanical engineer, graduated from USC, and I have a master degree in mathematics. I own 18 large businesses. One of them is in your town.
Great.
I came here hopeful. One of you gentlemen did pray for us before we started, and his prayer was, "I hope we make the right decision for the citizens of our city." Do you really feel that's the right decision?
Yes.
Okay. One of you said nay. Why? He must know something. He must have heard something.
We can't respond during... Under this... This is for public input from you, and we'll take an inner advisement. I could...
It just happened that I have the money, mayor, to fix my house, but I don't know if everybody else does.
I just want to make clear that the city is working with the developer. The city is trying to address that issue, so don't connect the two. I know it's hard and difficult to understand, but the two are not connected.
How will you respond to us when your findings become more of a... How would you let us know, "Hey, I am as a city, I am as your council, trying to help you fix that's... The issue?"
We're asking you to give your name and address to the gentleman at the back of the room, and they are working with the developer to get those issues addressed.
Okay. Yeah. It's not a good enough answer, sir.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Josh Harold. I also live in the community, and I would like to urge council members, which should have already been done, but I too have requested the... Any inquiries that were done, city and building inspectors. I was given excuses, "Oh, we've changed systems. We've lost a lot of information. We can't get..." And, I mean, it just... It keeps getting pushed back. So if inspections were done, I would urge you all to look into that for future reference. I mean, because it's already too late for us.
Any other public comments? Okay. We'll be adjourned as the Guyman Housing Authority. We're going to reconvene as the Guyman Airport Authority. Agenda item number two is to approve the minutes of the special meeting of the September 1st, 2016 meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the September 1st, 2016 Airport Authority meeting.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action on approval of Resolution Number 16-01, a resolution of the trustees of the Guyman Airport Authority to the City of Guyman, Oklahoma Municipal Trust, establishing an investment policy for the Guyman Airport Authority.
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 16-01.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action to approve the renewal of the following leases for a term of one year. 4-1, Greg Downing, the airport lease agreement. 4-2, the airport hangar and ag leases. Oh, yeah. 4-1 and 4-2.
Make a motion that we approve the leases for the airport.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have four ayes.
We'll stand adjourned as the Guyman Airport Authority. We're going to reconvene as the Guyman City Council.
Peterson.
Aye.
Swager.
Here.
King.
Here.
Alvedres.
Here.
Crone.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Hawkins.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on approval of the Resolution Number 16-17, a resolution establishing ambulance service charges. Any questions, staff report, whatever? Mr. Mitchell?
Pardon?
Do we have any input, or anybody having questions?
No.
Chief?
Chief?
So this resolution's going to get us more in line with the rest of the state, but we'll still be about $600 cheaper than a lot of downstate as far as fire-based EMSs, but it'll get us up where we need to be. It won't affect your Medicare or Medicaid patients. What they pay is what they pay. They don't pay any more, they don't pay any less, and the citizens aren't passed on that. So it hasn't been raised, I think, in your packet since '97, so it's been a long time. Rates have gone up, ambulance has gone up, salaries have gone up. It's just the cost of doing business. So... Any questions for me? Concerns?
Do most insurance policies have ambulance clauses in them?
Yeah. Most of your medical insurances, yes, they have ambulance coverage in them.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
Any other discussion, questions, motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 16-17, item four.
I'll second.
Second. Have a motion in a second.
King.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action on Resolution Number 16-18, a resolution establishing fares for the ride.
We had this discussion during our budget workshops, and the council agreed that we need to raise the fees for individuals who were using that service, and we hadn't raised those fees since the start of the service. David, anything you want to add to that? We're recommending a $1 increase.
I make a motion that we accept Resolutions Number 16-18, item five.
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number six is discussion and possible action on Resolution Number 16-19, adopting the operating budget for the 2017 fiscal year and authorizing budget transfers.
Mayor, we have handed out to you the budget book binder, so we hope there aren't any other minor changes. We've had about two months of discussion about our budget for the coming year, and we think that the one that we came up with is a great representation of the city's financial position and one that we will be able to implement starting January 1st.
Okay. Any questions, discussion?
I make a motion that we approve the Resolution 16-19, adopting the operating budget for 2017.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action on Resolution Number 16-20, a resolution of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, establishing an investment property policy for the City of Guyman. Any question, motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 16-20.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Discussion... Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action on ordinance Number 811, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma with the code of ordinances of the City of Guyman, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an emergency. Mr. Doug Moore.
Yes. Mr. Mayor. Yes, we've had a zoning request basically to come from an M1, which is a mobile home subdivision district, over to a highway commercial and commercial recreational district, which is the C2 district. This is the area of the Joyce Edition, right next to where the Best Western Hotel is. They're coming and they're asking to take that portion of land right beside the existing hotel and change the zoning on that to allow for the construction of a new hotel in that location. I believe it's going to be a Hampton Inn, is what that's proposing for. So from going from the mobile home zone district to the C2, C2 would allow that use of the hotel in that area. They're not requesting to rezone that whole vacant parcel. They're just looking at doing that one piece right over adjacent to allow for this hotel. Down the road, they'll come in and look at doing those, that, the remainder of the land when they have financing pulled together to do more development there, so.
Any questions, motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Change Ordinance Number 811.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to declare this emergency.
Second.
Have a motion in two seconds.
Crone.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number nine, you want to table that?
Mayor, yes, just wanted to remind you on that, is a requirement to be able to do a final plat approval would be that we have a, what's called a surety bond in place for construction of the utilities and the roads. The applicant was unable to get that bond in place prior to this meeting, so we're asking you to go ahead and pull that from your agenda, and we have... We do have hopes that they'll be able to have that bond in place for your next meeting on January 12th, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion... Probably already done that discussion and possible action on approval of AHIP rebate to Lance Windell Development in the amount of $192,000. Do we need to do it again?
Yes, that's a... That's an agreement between the city and the developer, so that has to be voted on through the housing authority, then also has to be considered by the city council.
And we're bonded by this contract.
Yes, we are.
As a municipality, we're bonded by this contract to pay those monies.
We are.
Now, it's my knowledge that the state inspector's going to be out tomorrow. Is that correct?
That's what I understand.
And so I feel your pain because the... Some of the stories I got about your air conditioning unit's not working last summer... the, some of the stories I got about your air conditioning units not working last summer, and we found out about your heating units yesterday. And if there was some way that we could hold this money, I think all of us probably would, but we do, we are under legal commitment to fulfill our obligation of that contract. And so, it's not that we really want to, but I think we have to.
I might add, a visit with Mr. Windell yesterday. In all of his developments, he's never used gas heat, he uses electric. Electric E ninety-five heaters put off condensation, and that's causing the problems, the condensation freezing. He's working on fixes, I think he's visited with our, our staff's visited with him. And he assured me that he would do everything because the issues with the heat and air, the issues with the frozen pipes, or warranty issue, is what he explained to me. So, if you have a, again, if you have a problem, if you want to know about the inspections, if you want to, want to know about, have the inspectors come look at your house, get with our guys, with Brock and Kevin, make sure they got your name, your contact information, so they could schedule a time to get with you. Also, if you do have an, if you, if you feel, still feel you have problems, it's a problem, this is a deal between the developer and you. You bought the house from him and you bought it through a relator. My advice would be to also contact that relator and get him into the mix because you are under a warranty period, from what I understand, on your houses. And I, unlike Mr. Swager and everybody else up here, we want you to, to be as safe and happy and healthy, but those are, those are the remedies we have right now, and I know they're working, working on them. So we had some conversation. Anything else?
I'll make a motion that we approve the rebate to the Land Swindell Development.
Second the motion.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Cron?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes and one nay.
Agenda item number eleven is discussion and possible action to approve the renewal of the following agreements and contracts. Eleven point one, the Crawford and Associates PC. Eleven point two, Finley and Cook PLLC. Eleven point three, the informal, informal, inter-local agreement for joint, for joint emergency management services. Eleven point four, the OPSU Emergency Medical Technology Training Agreement. Eleven point five, a sales tax agreement with Gaiman WMOP, which it automatically renews. Eleven point six is the Oklahoma Tax Commission Agreement for Administration of Sales and Use Tax Ordances, auto-renewal. Eleven point seven is Severn and Trent Wastewater Agreement, which is not a renew. Are there any discussions, a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the renewal of the contract, item number eleven.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Cron?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Excuse me. Agenda item number twelve is discussion and possible action to approve the renewal of the following leases for a term of one year. Twelve point one, the Adrenaline Softball Association. Twelve point two is the Gaiman Babe Ruth Association. Twelve point three is Gaiman Kids Incorporated. Twelve point four is ISD number eight, Edison School. Twelve point five is ISD number eight, FFA Farm. Twelve point six is the John Reed Permit Premises. Twelve point seven is Lions Club. Twelve point eight, Loews and Fishes. Twelve point nine is No Man's Land Rifle and Pistol Association. Twelve point ten is No Man's Land Senior Citizens Club. Twelve point eleven is Panhandle Services for Children. Twelve point twelve is Panhandle Wind Girls Softball Association. Twelve point three is a Pat Milton Domestic Fuel Agreement. Twelve point fourteen is PTSI Parking Lot at Fifth and Ellison. Twelve point fifteen is PTSI Facility at the Animal Shelter. Twelve point six is Airport Hangar and Ag Leases.
I make a motion that we-
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull No Man's Land Rifle and Pistol Association out of that and vote on it separately.
Okay. Do we need a motion in a second to pull and do that? Okay, so I have a motion to pull the Panhandle, no, Panhandle, No Man's Land Rifle and Pistol Association from the list. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second to remove that from the list.
Alvedras?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Cron?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the rest of the list?
Make a motion that we approve items listed under twelve, with the exception of the No Man's Land Rifle and Pistol Association.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Cron?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Okay, Mr. Cron.
Well, I have a vested interest, and I'm an officer in the club, and I'm, I'm, I need to abstain from that, so.
Okay.
Everybody else can vote on it.
Oh, I see, okay.
I make a motion that we renew the lease with item twelve point nine, No Man's Land Rifle.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Cron?
Abstain.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes and one abstain.
Agenda item number thirteen is discussion and possible action on the renewal of lease agreements for equipment and property. Thirteen point one is ambulance twelve twenty-seven dash twelve. Thirteen point two is fire bunker gear, twelve twenty-seven of twelve. Thirteen point two is the new city hall, twelve twenty-seven of twelve. Thirteen point four is refuse truck, nine twenty-six of thirteen. Thirteen point five is backhoe, nine twenty-six of thirteen. Thirteen point six is ladder truck, two thirteen of fourteen. Thirteen point seven is progressive golf turf, turf equipment, seven fourteen of sixteen. Thirteen point eight is two thousand fourteen case five eighty backhoe and bucket. Thirteen point nine is two thousand seventeen max sanitation truck. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the action to renew all of the leases under item number thirteen.
Second.
Motion, have a motion in a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Cron?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number fourteen is discussion and possible action to appoint or reappoint members on various boards and commissions to terms expire December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. A list is attached. Any discussion, motion?
Everybody's, has everybody gone and done the background to see if, if we're allowed to reappoint these members on these commissions and boards? If we don't go over, okay.
And I think they've all agreed.
Background work has been done?
Yes.
Awesome, okay, thank you.
Were each of these members contacted by any chance?
Yes.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we appoint or reappoint members of various boards and commissions on item fourteen.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Cron?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
We'll stand adjourned as the Gaiman City Council. We're going to re-adjourn, as, reconvene as the Gaiman Industrial Authority. Agenda item number two is approve the minutes of the special meeting of October twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the special meeting of October twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Cron?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action on resolution number sixteen dash oh one, establishing an investment policy for the Gaiman Industrial Authority.
Make a motion that we approve resolution number sixteen dash oh one.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Cron?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Any public comments and announcements on the Industrial Foundation Authority?
Mayor, do you want me to do mine with Peter? I thought we'd have a public announcement in the city council.
We can do that, or do, do, you want to do it at the end of the meeting?
It doesn't matter.
Now's fine.
Whatever's best for you all, I don't care.
Go right ahead, let's go.
We like listening to you.
I've got some restless kids, I'm afraid might go crazy here in a second. Well, councilmembers, we, we had our awards ceremony at the fire station, and without the help of the citizens of the community and you all, we wouldn't be nearly as successful as we are.
Thank you.
And I like to brag and say we have one of the best fire departments in the state, so. Let's get the best in Texas. So with that, like I said, we did give our awards, I would like to recognize them publicly, we did it amongst our families. That way everybody got to see them there, but I thought it was important to do it here, so. Each year we give distinguished service awards to different businesses that have helped us succeed throughout the year. This year we gave four of them, so if you'll, I'm going to do them all in one big house swoop, that way we speed things up a little bit, but we gave one to High Plains, High Plains Ag for countless hours of hard work and dedication to helping the Gaiman Fire Department complete its mission. We gave one to Apollo Med Flight for their many monetary contributions to our Kenny Huggins Memorial Golf Tournament and supporting us during many ventures, also providing quality air support and assuring the best possible outcome of our patients here in Texas County. We gave one to Ballard Construction for countless hours of hard work and dedication to the Gaiman Fire Department and providing the time and equipment needed to make our department stay one of the best. And this year we gave one to KKBS for their dedication in helping the Gaiman Fire Department complete its mission by providing up to, up to the minute radio broadcast during emergencies, advertising during our many fundraisers, and most importantly, Rocket Ramones' help in providing one of the best Fourth of July ceremonies to the citizens of Gaiman. I don't know how many of you heard it, but I was, I was highly impressed, I came to him with a, a vision and he pulled it off tremendously, so. We appreciate it. And the last one was to the Gaiman Daily Herald for their dedication in helping the Gaiman Fire Department complete its mission by providing citizens with great news coverage of our many events, disasters, and public education efforts in this great community. Other than that, we gave two career service awards, these members have to have at least ten years of service. Anybody that knows the guys we have, we have some great ones. Joe Ballard's been a firefighter of the year like twenty-seven times, and he's only been on like fifteen years, so. He was given a career service award. And we gave one to Wayne Dawson. Or we gave one to Grant Wadley for his dedication to the EMS service. Any of you know him, he's very dedicated to EMS. Takes a special type of person to be that dedicated to EMS, so I couldn't do it without him. The next ones we gave were Medal of Honors, and we gave two of those, we gave one to Assistant Chief Scott Lathrop for his dedication to the training. Again, we have one of the best well-trained departments in the state, so without him, that wouldn't be possible, so, thank you. And then we gave a Medal of Honor to Wayne Dawson. Believe it or not, we, we are firefighters, we have feelings too, so occasionally we see some things that don't need to be seen, that no one should ever have to see, and so Wayne Dawson is a chaplain and he's very great, he's also a volunteer firefighter, but if our guy sees something, he's always there to help us, so. The other two, we call them the big three awards, so we gave our firefighter of the year, and we gave our paramedic of the year to paramedic Joe Plouffe for ongoing commitment and leadership to the fire department's EMS program and activities. And then our firefighter of the year was Chase Stone for consistent leadership at the firefighter level in all department activities. And the last one, he couldn't be here, was Kevin Brewer. Was given the Nick Jones Volunteer Firefighter of the Year for constant leadership in the Gaiman Fire Department, so. Thank you all for letting me talk for a little bit.
Thank you.
Congratulations to everybody.
Great job.
Let's get out of here. You just wanted to leave.
Well, it's, it's not thirsty Thursday, though.
You're right, chief.
Before you guys all run off, I want to tell you, I want to thank the firemen. Last Friday, they put their lives out there again on that big grass fire. Chief told me everybody came home safe, we're glad they did, we're supportive of you, and good job.
Thank you.
Talk to you.
All right, anything else under Gaiman Industrial Authority? Any new business?
Mayor?
Yes.
Well, since I didn't get to do city manager comments in the other meeting, I thought I'd take the opportunity here to do that.
Did I skip over that, or we didn't have it?
We didn't have it listed, but, you know, that's, that's probably my fault, but anyway, I want to just thank the council for their cooperation during this budget process, I know it was very difficult. It was a transition year, and I appreciate the support and the encouragement that each of you gave me. It was a learning curve for me, and I think we've done what we needed to do to set the course for the city for the coming year, and now all we have to do, you know, we, the budget's the easy part, now we have to go out and actually do the work, so. I wanted to thank the council for that. I also wanted to mention that since you approved the budget tonight, then we'll be putting the final touches on the IBTS agreement, and that agreement should be on your agenda for the January twelfth meeting. We've been doing some work on an MOU and doing some contract modifications that we talked about during the budget workshop, and we'll have those ready by the twelfth of January to, for your consideration and approval. And then finally, I wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, all of that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think we, we echo the same thing back, that we appreciate you and hope you and your family have one of the finest Christmases and New Years you can have. Okay, we, any new business? We'll stand adjourned as the Gaiman Industrial Authority. We'll reconvene as the Gaiman Utilities Authority. Already done items one and two. Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action on resolution number sixteen dash fifteen. Resolution of the trustees of the Gaiman Utilities Authority of the City of Gaiman, Oklahoma, a municipal trust, establishing an investment policy for the Gaiman Utilities Authority.
Make a motion that we approve resolution number sixteen dash fifteen.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
King?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Cron?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on renewing of the following leases for a term of one year. Four point one is the Seven L Land and Cattle. And four point two is the Clay Curtis Ag Lease. Any discussion, motion?
I make a motion that we approve leases for Seven L Land and Cattle and Clay Curtis Ag Lees.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Cron?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action on approval of Contractor's Application for Payment Number Two to Gates Utilities in the amount of two thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Any discussion, questions? Motion?
Make a motion that we approve Contractor's Application Payment Number Two to Gates Utilities, item five.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Cron?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.